Whatever the date is, September 18th, 2014. Thank you for joining. Antiplying board taking mental readments, I'll accept the motion. Excluding Robert and myself. As we went here. Maybe you can speak a little louder.
When I listen to the minutes, I can always hear.
I never thought about if it's on TV too.
You have no idea. When both sides start talking.
Oh, well, you take it from that then, don't you?
I take my own notes, but then I always worry that I missed something, so I listen to it anyway.
On the TV though, not because you don't record this, you don't have to tape recorder either?
No, because I just go on the cable.
Yeah, 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 right. Gotcha. And so there's a lot of back chatter then.
You have no idea.
Really? Anything to make it tougher for the trolls.
Trolls. I think we should be flipping it.
Second. Any change in the corrections? All's in favor of I?
Aye.
All's opposed, nay? None deal. And, uh... Ah-ha! Blue business. Jeffrey and Sheri Del Cesto? Is that the pronunciation?
Yes.
Uh, one referee land, cha-cha-cha-cha-cha. Now, we've had... Pardon me. He'll be here back. We've had two sidewalks. And the first one... We could've used more people there. Couple of us were out of town for whatever, so... With tonight, I think everybody's had a chance to see the property. So can everybody here right now?
Some notes that are there from the first time through, that basically just things that, you know, were built.
Did you do the notes?
Yeah.
Want to go ahead and read them for the cable crowd?
About the inter?
No, I'm saying, read them so the people at home know. You'd be surprised. Marches on TV, boy. That's embarrassing. And maybe we can just bomb the app.
Plus it gets the camera off.
Does it? Oh, yeah, guys, keep it over there.
Site visit one. It's a one referee grant. It says, "Property is significantly sloped toward the water and/or the small brick..." Brook, which is not the land. "The driveway is very sketchy, old asphalt and sand, with an attempt to hold back runoff with no barriers and open catch spaces. Runoff mitigation seems to be one of the bigger hurdles, if not the biggest, while deciding how to act on the proposal. With the proposal attempting to keep the structure in place, it seems to be a challenge to have enough room to keep runoff from the lake. Moving the house away from the lake may be difficult because of a hill which is very close to the existing structure. Digging into the hill will entail not only moving soil, but also cutting numerous trees. Also, there is a potential that there is ledge in the hill." A second issue with keeping the structure in place is the additions have been designed which will further encroach on the lake. One new deck will replace an existing section of the house, however, two other additional decks will easily be inside of 100 feet from the lake. Furthermore, a newly designed side addition will also impact the lake in the well within that same 100 feet. A new septic will be pumped up to the previously mentioned hill. Again, these were just notes that were taken. There was not, uh, there was no attempt to try to persuade anybody one way or another. It was just discussion.
Yep. And tonight, we pretty much looked the same things, although I think we looked a little more seriously maybe at moving the house back. I think the consensus was that even if the house was replaced where it's at right now, some of these trees are so close and hanging so close to the house that chances on they'd be removed for safety issues. Anyway, um, the hill ends about three feet behind the back part of the house right now. That's gonna have to be cut back just to be able to get around it, to get the machinery around there. So, I don't know, but I... I would like to see the house moved back some into the hill. I think it's something that could be... It could be done without, you know, insurmountable issues. And that's, the charge of this committee is, when we have a home that's within 100 feet of the water, and it's gonna be replaced significantly, we try and get it as far away from the water as we feasibly can, you know, without making matters worse. And I think, at least on my part, the thinking is that there is room to move this dwelling back, uh, to give it more space in front of the house, which then would be, uh, easier design to catch the water from running into the lake than it is right now. That's just one man's opinion. Anybody else want to jump up?
Could we hear from both Ken who met outside, I guess, this week with Mike Morris from the DEP and maybe Julian to get some more thoughts in the air? Who wants to go first?
I can go first.
Okay.
Looking at the site specific with the DEP, this one was complicated because it did have a knoll on the backside, but the knoll plateaued right off. Mike's comments were, "Don't look at the trees because they're not an issue, it's not within the guidelines to look at it." And there's room to move it back. How far is, is up to the board, and his main thing was stay consistent with what you guys have been doing in the past with all the other ones you've done. A lot of towns are much more lenient on the relocations, and that'd be something to consider, and this boy hasn't been. They've relocated a lot of them, if there's room to locate. This one here, the setback from the road would be a primary factor, and the setback from the power lines, easement through there, which comes out to about the same area.
Potentially.
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so roughly 30 feet back from the back of the house to where those setbacks are.
So your thinking is we could, if we move the house, we could move the front to where the back is now roughly, is that what you're...
And then if they were to hit ledge?
Ledge could be an issue that you guys could consider and pull it ahead for it. Looking at the test bit data from the septic, it was sandy gravelly loom for four feet down back up on the hill.
Yeah. So I'd be surprised if we're gonna hit that. I mean, there's that big boulder there, sure, but I'd be surprised if there's gonna be any significant ledge there with, like you said, with the soils are from the test bit
Julian, what would you say?
Well, we had, uh, just leaving it at that, we concerned about what we would find when, if we started digging into the hole, into the hill. And when I met with the York County Soil and Water Conservation District, she recommended just adding plant-ins on the shoreline, bringing in maybe three feet from the water's edge and with mulch, and use a mason stones or some timbers that are similar to what's over the water. And then we also had the concern with the driveway runoff from the road. We talked about a couple of issues with that and how to resolve that.
This was an onsite visit?
This is an onsite visit.
Was there any comments from her on the option two of moving it back?
She... She thought it would be difficult to move it back. She didn't know what...
Was there any discussion as to whether or not it would make the erosion control more difficult or easier?
No, she didn't give an opinion of that. She didn't think it really would, uh, she would, as far as the house, we could catch any runoff from the roof with either gutters or drip strips. And then get you to go to, with the gutters, we could go to rain garden or dry wells or braybowl, or barrel, we can just catch it.
Did you have any discussion with her about the amount of trees that would have to be removed?
Uh, she did mention that, that there was a concern about how much the trees, that we would have to lose to move the house back. But she also felt that this site right now, there's a lot of plant-ins and a lot of ground cover there that would help, especially along with the stream edge.
Well, there's a fair amount of trees that'll have to be removed for the new septic, correct?
The septic, there would have to be, for the back, yes.
Just a question for Mr. and Mrs. Del Cesto. Were you thinking of, with the proposed plan of leaving it in place and raising it, were you thinking of, or what was your thinking in terms of the existing tree off in order to facilitate the septic tank? Were you gonna maximize or minimize the number of trees that you were proposing to take down?
Well, I think it's Jeffrey Del Cesto. Okay. So, um, well, we've always tried to minimize the number of trees at all. In fact, the only trees that...
Be down.
To take down, to take down the trees. The only trees that I know, I think maybe over the 25 years we've been there, one fell near the ravine and knocked out a power line, so the power company came to replace it. One fell over the right of way, and the neighbors called and said, "There's a huge tree across the right of way," and that we had an ant-infested one by the house that had to be taken down. So, this, I guess the thing, the septic where it is now, it's a consequence of events, so it would be, if we wanted to have sufficient bedrooms to house not just us two, but my son and his family, we would need a larger septic. That's what we were told. We have a seven chamber, I think.
I believe so.
Yeah, I can look it up, but we, whatever the number of chambers is, we have to go to a bigger, we have to go from a seven to a 14 chamber.
Is that...
So, so when the surveyors, so then the surveyors were called and said, "Where can we put this?" And they said, "Well, that's where you'd have to put it, that spot that's been identified right off of the right of way." You know, if there's trees there now, there's, there's a lot of trees on the property because it's quite big, and nothing is ever done on the side of the stream. So to answer your question specifically, one of our ultimate goals is to get a little bit more floor space and roof space, so we can have an official bedroom in there, and that requires a bigger septic. Therefore, that's why the septic is up there, and if there's trees there, that's the only place we could put it. There are other things we'd like to talk about too, but we couldn't wait till they addressed them.
Go ahead. Whatever is on your mind.
Okay, so about three years ago, we noticed that the runoff down our driveway became very intense, and we couldn't figure it out right then, but we engaged AWA, the Acton-Wakefield Water Center Alliance, and we started working with them, and they came out in the summer after we did, you know, over the spring. They came out last year in the summer and put the barriers, the three barriers across the driveway, and they put the barriers on the, down the steps. They were gonna mulch the entire front lawn. It's not a lawn, by the way, for those who haven't seen it. It's never been changed from its natural state. So if there was never a house there, that's exactly what you see. I mean, we walk over it, but that's about it. We've never planted grass, we've, um, we leave it natural. So, they were gonna mulch it, and we said, "But we've already started talking to an architect about making renovations. It doesn't make a lot of sense to mulch that." So we, we said, "Hold off on the mulch, we'll do it next year or right after they finish redoing renovations." So that's why there's no mulch on the front lawn, and there's no erosion control and no ECM and that kind of stuff. Erosion control, mulch. So we, we had the AWA come in, put in the two dry wells, and we've been cleaning them out. What we've noticed is that since Langley Shore has fixed their road, that actually raised up that side. On the other side, we have a neighbor who owns a lot of heavy machinery. I mean, I have a little shovel. He has machines that dig and move boulders, and he has a very awesome cover, but no water goes that way. And what happens is the water comes into our driveway. It's, it's a rushing, rushing stream that comes into our driveway. It's a, it's a big erosion problem, and we try to put a berm up, but all we have is a shovel, and, you know, we're not trying to change the landscaping much. I will say one thing though, and that is, that stream has been, that stream has been the way it is for over 25 years now. Nothing's been changed in that street from us or anybody for 25 years, and it's handled everything that that runoff, those mountains, the street has hit it with, including what happened about four or five years ago where the road got washed away. So I think we need to work on ways to get the erosion to go into that stream. Anyway, so that was one point. So I wanted to bring you up today on where we were with the AWA, about that kind of I mean, you want to say anything?
And I guess, I guess the other thing about the, um, the location of the house, part of the reason that we truly love the location is because of the proximity to the water. And because of, it's a small deck the way it is, and we actually are not actually increasing the deck, we would be removing part of it. So it's not like we're adding additional deck, we're adding additional deck space, but it's an existing sunroom that we are thinking of converting into additional deck space. So it's not actually any additional, you know, as far as the property is. But that's really part of the reason why we love the lake is how close we are to the water. And it is a fairly narrow strip of water. I mean, it's 100 feet, but it's narrow, and it's got a lot of trees, which we also like, which provide privacy and all of those things that make our little piece of Great East Lake what we love. Our fear is that if we are, if we need to push the house back a lot farther, that we will lose that vantage point that we currently can see over 180 degrees, because we are on a little jut out. And you can see down the lake all the way to the Skirtna River, and you can see up the other end. And I think those things are what we really truly love about the house. And so I just throw that out there, and we, you know, the location is, is what we, you know, that's really part of the charm of the place. It's certainly not the building. The building certainly needs repair, and we've had a lot of deferred maintenance because we have been thinking about renovations for a while. And that's why we started with the architect, and we've gone through the, the cost of doing all that, the cost of the survey, because we know it was a challenging, a challenging plot. It certainly is. It's too complicated, and there's a lot of issues, but we certainly are not gonna take down trees. We, of anybody, we've seen a lot of trees go down in other places, but ours, we have taken down only the ones that we need to. And we don't even have, we haven't even raised the canopy all that much around there either, if you've noticed. We haven't gone way, way high on the canopy because we have kept that natural vegetation there. Thank you.
Anyone else with a, uh, bond, minds?
I am having a hard time getting a handle on whether we're actually enhancing the erosion issues by moving it back up there. I understand there'd be a wider apron of, uh, undisturbed ground that we could, uh, put erosion control mix and vegetation, et cetera, in the front by moving it, by basically flipping the house, you know, back the width of the house. But there are so many other difficulties with the driveway, et cetera.
Well, if the house were moved back, part of the driveway wouldn't even have to be using with part down where the house is at now. I mean, that could be an extreme erosion control setup down there.
Mr. and Mrs. Del Cesto, was there ever any discussion amongst yourselves or with, with David and company of, uh, shrinking the driveway kind of thing? And, and having a driveway terminated a little closer up there?
Yeah, I don't think we've actually talked about that with the David and Joanne, but we have talked about that in the past. At one point, we did have a quote to have the re-drive, the driveway done, and we thought if we shortened the driveway and just made more of a, I guess, a landscaped area behind the house, because the distance doesn't, we certainly don't want to make the driveway all the way to the house, and we've kind of kept it where it was originally. But yeah, we have, we have actually thought about that, whether you would have a more landing at the top and then walk down, or whether you would just stop it.
Joanne, did, did, did the York County individuals talk about maybe utilizing part of what is the driveway, the downslope area, it's maybe an absorption area?
Um, we hadn't talked about it. We really hadn't discussed whether how far the driveway, whether it would end or not. We just discussed at the beginning on where it butted the road, how to deal with the runoff to try to divert it.
Yeah. Yeah, I was kind of wondering, looking at it, if you always move the septic there, you could put the driveway where the old septic was and the whole site where the driveway is now, which is closer to the brook, could be revegetated, so you'd be, your driveway would be a little shorter, but you'd be parking to the right of the brook further, you know, in that old septic footprint. I think that would, that would help, 'cause you have, you know, the, what is it, 12 feet or whatever the width of your driveway is, where you could put something there, revegetate it, and maybe put a couple of the trees you're gonna lose removing your septic, replant them in the footprint of the old driveway.
Okay, when they were, it was the town in Awal, right, that collaborated on that Langley Shore's drive enhancement?
No, that's, that's the private road association.
Did they, did they monkey with anything up this high? Like there's that crazy culvert which contributes to more water feeding into the brook there? And it looked, there's actually looked like there were two culverts involved there.
Yeah, yeah, they've got a drone as to... They could reestablish something at the top of that area there where the paving is. I think there's some mailboxes there or something, and establish a punch bowl, rain garden, something like that.
They made it in the road association or...
Property owners' road association, either one, both move together? 'Cause that's, that's really the big problem is coming down that hill, is the velocity of water that you have there.
And that is gonna improve over time.
Well, not until the road starts getting broken up again, huh? Starts going...
One other, excuse me, Chair. One other data point is that when plowing happens, it all ends up right at those mailboxes. So every year, you get a little bit of higher and higher silt and sand.
Is that, are these just a couple of mailboxes right at the, at the top of the creek there?
Yeah.
Where we were parked? Those mailboxes?
They're, they're on our property, yeah.
And that's the Sturman's pilot, does it block your drive then? You don't talk during the winter?
We don't come up in the winter, but we, we do, we did buy that particular property 'cause it was at the very end of paved road. If I lived at the end of Langley or Stewart, I would have no way of getting to there 'cause...
Gotcha.
I don't have that kind of vehicle.
But it does, yeah.
But that's just a data point that, you know, I don't know where else they would put that stuff, but over the, when the spring comes, there's always another mound of silt.
Yeah, they do plow right into the edge of, end of the driveway, 'cause we have been up in winter, and you've had to just walk over, we can't get into the driveway, we don't expect to either. And then it's plowed along that whole edge, so that whole kind of berm that's along the paved strip until the ravine has been built up by, it's mostly sand, plows, and yeah, so that's why the sand comes out through. So it's all there.
Who else? Who else has got some comments?
Well, how much does the hill have to be excavated just to raise the house the way that it wanted? Or this house wasn't now, are they, I forget whether they're actually planning a basement or I don't think they'd have to if they moved the house back.
Yes, they're planning to put it in the basement.
Right. If they just re-raise it or more exact, there's gonna be a cellar underneath it.
So how, I mean, right now, you can barely walk behind the house, so that's all gonna have to be excavated anyway, isn't it? And at right at the top, there's two huge trees that are gonna have their roots cut loose. You're gonna lose all those roots. So, I don't know what the trade note is.
Well, I, um, I don't know.
Quick question, Ken. I'm trying to find here, something stuck in my mind about if, if the house is, um, either relocated or raised in place, the elevation cannot be in excess of three feet of the existing?
Correct.
Now, does that pertain to moving it and/or the situation is elevating?
It's measured off the original grade from the red part of the house. So currently, they have four feet sticking out of the front that they elevated in place, three feet that they set a foot foundation underneath that they would make beautiful height. By moving it back into that hill, they probably wouldn't elevate it at all, because when you gotta measure off the grade, the original grade would probably be a negative elevation.
So you'd be more or less maintaining that basement grade, sliding it back?
Correct.
And your new grade for the house now would be the back part of the hill where it's raised up?
Which could be used to, you know, under...
Do you just get more complexion every time?
Well, uh, is there more information that anybody needs? Okay, maybe, maybe we don't wanna push it back the whole width of the house, maybe like, you know, how wide, how wide would it be if the back, what's the depth of the house?
I don't have a scale on me now, but the elevation grade is 10 feet roughly to, if the whole house was pulled back.
Mike, I got a question for the Del Sisters again. During a thunderstorm event in the summer, what is the flowage down the driveway, and where the hell does it go?
Well, that's why the AWA, we had, that's why the AWA last summer, put in the, the, the rubber razors. 'Cause now it collects in the dry well. Before, it was coming straight down.
Going right into the lake.
We had put, you know, we had put some timbers and things and shunted it off into the stream. But, um, but yeah, that's where it would go now. I mean, it's, uh...
Yeah, we, yeah, we have been up here, this summer has been exceptionally some, couple of very, we happened to be here for one of them or two, and then we, the aftermath of one of the dry wells that was actually closer to the house was literally filled with sand. And so we dug that all out and repopulated it up, basically along the edge where it was in the right of way area to get it out of the way. And then, um, but it does definitely prevent the water from going all the way down into the lake, the two rubber razors. So it's no longer doing that, it is stopping. it just stopped at those two intervals and plus the third one that's closer to the house so
I would think it would be an improvement if if these folks were willing as part of the resolution of this to to enhance the runoff created by whatever length of driveway is proposed hopefully we could we could shorten the driveway a little bit and have a a much more rigorous erosion sedentition plan brought to bear on driveway and hopefully with the help of the road association mitigate something with that project that's a whole nother project would you be willing to consider shortening truncated driveway a little bit
Yeah we so like I said we haven't done anything for 25 years okay because we knew there'd be issues and the place is just about perfect the way it is now trust me it is and but there there are concerns and there's an erosion concern there's a tiny bit of a space concern but you know families can deal with that and so we 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 went out and got experts we knew that this was well beyond calling up the local construction guy and say hey come on down start digging or start hammering we hired an architect and said let's explore all the possibilities and then they said now we need a survey after explore those possibilities if we have to hire an erosion control expert we'll hire it we're here to help preserve the lake I said I've been coming up since I was 16 I don't want to see anything harmed in the lake so we want to do everything right I was before this board in 1988 in October when the previous owners had said had built way too much than their permit and I told the board I said look my wife and I want to buy this property whatever you do figure out a way to make it sellable so we can buy it and make a get a mortgage on it six feet of the house was cut off even with that six feet of house gone it's still a perfect place okay so we're not gonna we're not gonna take a half measure we're not gonna make an eyesore we want to do what's right what's right for acting what's right for gravy slate you know I just became president of the tennis association the tri-town the tri-town tennis because nobody else wanted the job it's like man I love tennis I'll be president you know it's like we're here to stay and we're here to spend the money and it's all right we both
You shouldn't have said that
But we are willing to
We don't we'd even know what all the possibilities were until we started having some serious discussions with Joanne and David and then the survey of people did their stuff and we who knew what we would find in that so I think my wife was pretty passionate about moving the house back if if we have to make compromises so that the house doesn't get pushed back and just remains in its place you know we're willing to do that and and at the same time if the erosion things are corrected then then we will do that too I we don't want to see what happens on thunderstorms either and we certainly don't want to see if well that the road gave way I don't know what you could do but the next time that happens we don't want to be a problem our property should be able to withstand what happens and and help that stream okay hope that answers your question
I don't mean to give you a hot ten but have you thought of putting a road association handle as well as tennis handle
Well we're we're not part of that other association
Yeah we're not
See see that that association starts with our most immediate neighbor on the other side of the stream and and we're not experts we can't look at something and say oh this is a 55% impersion on the amount of water nobody really knows that
You're saying that the Langley Shores Road Association
Yeah
Will you still drive in on Langley Shores to get to your private road do you still be
No we don't actually
You don't go on Langley Shores to get there
Doesn't it start I think it starts
That's how we got in there
It starts right up we don't go
Puzzle goes off to the right that's Langley
I think you have to go on Langley And then you get your route Yeah so I think I think we would totally
I think the men We definitely do I guess I don't know the legalities of where the I know we don't own property
Right you use it right away so I mean just like I was driving down there that's where I'm there too
But isn't that isn't that portion of that road accepted by the town
Yeah it's road there
Because that's plowed and school buses used to drive down that far I think
And it was replaced
Yeah I wouldn't have a road association if it was maintained by the town
Right that's why that's the dirt road
Not the paved doesn't
So it's part of puzzle it I I don't exactly know how far the how far is town way down that
But I think the key word is that's a bigger project
Oh yeah 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 sure Joanne was talking earlier about what ASYCC suggested doing to me in my mind sounds great however I think it would be greater if there was more room to do those same kinds of things and I still have a hard time justifying and I know this may sound harsh but I still have a hard time justifying a view versus make it better for the lake and as a result of that I I would certainly have a hard time leaving this house where it is you know moving it back the width of the house that 25 30 feet or whatever that happens to be to me just opens up a big area that can help in that mitigation of that water that comes down now granted I understand that maybe changing the driveway is gonna be of help I don't see that as being an end all moving house back in addition to that too I think would be would be even better there's my logic I would tend to to agree with that more land in front will give will give a better opportunities for you know mitigating the water running right into the lake and there again that's the main thing that we're supposed to look at or deal with is if we can move these places that are too close back then that's what we're really trying to do sometimes it's a couple of feet sometimes it's you know the back part of the property depending on how much room there is to deal with I mean if we can move these places to the 100 foot setback you know we'd be in clover but not everybody's got that kind of land plus you've got the telephone poles there as well the lines so but I don't know I think moving it moving the front close toward the back of the house is is certainly something that would be doable I mean there's been other places that would push back further in the hills and the hills that could typically wind up not just this is almost just a hump there really because behind it the the property was downsized so I don't know but I wouldn't be I wouldn't be averse to having the place pushed back Tom
Oh I'm just looking how did the contours end I'm just trying to think of how they're gonna be if it is moved back
What do they have to cut into now that's what I'd like to know like if they didn't move it how far would they have to cut into the hill
It depends on what kind of machinery they're gonna be trying to squeeze around there is that was that little shit supposed to come off that little
Yes A lot of the big trees on top of that hill have to come off anyway
Well for the septic all the ones that's in there are gonna have to come off
Yeah well then there's those two other trees that probably just put me on the top of my house I guess but if they cut into that hill at all those trees are goners
All the fires and roofs
Yeah
That's that's what puzzling me just is that by by digging into the hill somewhere around the around the gable ends of the house it seems like we're gonna end up with more fresh disturbed ground on both gable ends and I I'm just looking at this small map to kind of think that through I I just question whether we're gaining ground there or losing it you know unintentionally it's gonna take a very rigorous erosion control plan to pull that off and as you move it back
Just during construction you mean
Okay
Just during construction
And and post-construction to get revegetated
Yes it's opportunities it makes a lot of elements for other grading that needs to be done
Can are we within bounds to stipulate anything an enhancement of the of the driveway at all Ken
Usually we'd ask for a plan from Acton Winkell Watershed or York County Water and Soil to mitigate the site the best they can with the best management practices that's readily available and not too rigorous and I would assume those guys that would be one app who Gavin had a good idea as far as pulling it in over there and revegetating on that brookside really your scope is to relocate the house where's the house gonna go and the rest is voluntary cooperation
Any more comments or questions on the house aren't we kind of quiet tonight I'd like one day we'll go on the sidewalk so Pardon me Uh one day we'll go on the sidewalk Not the first one either alright Alright good luck you pup Do you have it Yes
So someone was asking how much machinery and stuff like that we've already realized that having a big backhoe come in and dig a hole for a foundation is gonna be problematic it we're not even sure it can be done that some people have been skeptic about that whether you can get that kind of equipment in there so the additions to the house if you know your north south east west there are on the east heading toward Sanford that's the and and there's they have plans of the addition right yeah so so it's like the equivalent of like two 10 by 12 rooms up that side on that side there you know if it has to be more rooms like on sonic tubes like the addition that was put in in 86 of the kitchen you know and you know if we need to do other things to 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 mitigate the erosion you know if if the road didn't bring down the erosion the erosion that's happening in that property could probably be handled pretty straight with it's handling the erosion that that property is handed is given by the road that is a real challenge the other thing is the current septic apparently cannot be extended the seven chamber can't be made bigger because of a power company rule that they don't want to have a septic underneath their power line that would save a lot more trees extending that septic system than than putting a new one in up the hill and cutting down more trees and things like that but I I guess the thing is is if if my wife and I have to give up a basement or digging up the bottom you know and just go with getting someone to go in and put nice sonic tubes so that it's a solid base because parts of right now are built on rock we you know we have to do that that's what we'll do to retain the distance we are from the lake right now because like she said
I guess yeah I guess that's the real question is it the basement that is in the disturbing of the land that would require us to move the house back and if we chose not to do
No it's the proximity to the lake that requires the removal if it can be done
But say we're not going to move it and we're not going to do a basement
We have to lose addition to
Yeah that's fine well I'm just I'm just thinking that's what I wanted to know so you can't even do an addition with sonic tubes on the side I just don't know the rules
You can't increase the impervious surface of the thing
Okay okay so so it's not just the fact that we're we'd like a basement that's causing the
It would be a foundation with sonic tubes
Or not the basement foundation sorry because it's not a basement
You're gonna move back for for sonic tubes too
Okay because it's just we weren't sure about that as to whether it was the sticking point was the fact that we wanted a foundation or if it's something more than that so okay okay thank you
Well part of it is part of the reason you're here is because of the expansion and you're within 100 feet of the of the water and for a major undertaking as this was originally proposed then we you know seriously look at you know can we move the place back so and like I said even in the past sometimes we've only moved these places a few feet but if there's room behind it and we don't think it would cause more trouble then then not then we try and move them back as far as we can but you know I'm either looking for a motion or more discussion whatever you guys want to do are those is that the house plans
It's 20 feet there 27
With the gorge
This totally fills up their 30% I'm sure
Yes that's a puzzle that
I think it's pretty much exactly 30%
Yeah the volume I think is what it hit first yeah
And it's only 30% square foot area as well
Yeah it's less
It's less
It's less because it hit the volume first yes yeah part of it is the movement of an interior stairwell right now because it's in the middle of the existing road so that's part of it yeah
Oh you're gonna put that on the exterior and make a backdoor
Yes that stairway yes
Yeah do you chip the chip Yes the desire in these cases to try and always move them back is to improve the impervious surface between the existing building and the water I believe so yes So the key thing is the runoff mitigation that the whole thing turns Also you've got all the roofs you've got the decks you've got the impervious close to the water it does it's it's tough for it there's not that much land soaked into or being diverted on before you're in the lake So we're gonna increase the impervious surface close to the lake if they stay with the house Well yes yes with the addition on the side yes it'll be it'll be mitigated but still there'll be more impervious surface than there is right now but it's also because you know the state requires any new properties now any new structures to be 100 feet back and you know at one time it was like well at one time it was like nothing and then it was 35 feet and then it was 75 and it's been 100 for I don't know late 80s early 90s whatever so we try and you know get it back because of that too But the big deal with this particular site right now is runoff down the driveway
But the big deal with this particular site right now is runoff damage.
Well.
Well, the big deal is that the back of the house is right on a knoll. So, it looks like it would be difficult to move it back, but it's just a dirt-nod knoll with big trees on it that, that are gonna be disturbed anyway because the septic is gonna be above it.
Right.
So, moving the house back is actually an opportunity to re-contour that whole area and use it.
Cause it's not part of a hill that keeps going up like this. It's just a little bit of a hump and then it kind of levels out.
And on top of it are trees that are poised over the house.
Yeah, right.
Does, does everyone have a, um, a large plot plan?
No.
Well, I have a copy that has Kenny's indication of the new footprint when it's flipped. And what it's telling me is that the, the existing will bump out where there's the bathroom. Is it? There's a contour of five eighty-four. And then on the, and that would be on the, five eighty-four, five eighty-five, five eighty-six. Five, essentially five eighty-seven is the new northeast corner. And the, the new southeast corner is at five ninety-four. I think that's, I'm puzzled as to how that's gonna be treated.
If we have to move it back?
Yeah, let me just press this, uh, just.
I have, uh, last, uh, who needs a copy? That was just thrown in by Amy.
Yeah, this.
You can move the house in place if you want.
Gives you an illustration of that, he's, I, uh, on the east.
Well, even if, let's say a little house. This will monkey run around like this. It would only be at ninety-nine.
Or the fifty foot setback. And then this one here, and then fifty foot setback.
Well, it's not right now. Yeah, no, that's, that's my.
And we'd only be on, uh, five ninety-one.
If you had to come back, it would take that whole.
They're small.
Throw it down, alright, anyways.
Yeah, I'd take it. It goes here, it goes like this.
The structure all there. Yeah. Camera risked the audio.
Go ahead, step up, throw a motion out there.
Me?
Well, I'd take that one, I'd, 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 I'd.
I, I don't, I don't.
It's not really what we're looking at. The driveway is a good one for looking at. I'd like to see that in the process.
Maybe if they deal with water, can I show the water or even deal with it? You know, if the house is kicked back, it's, maybe, maybe it doesn't make sense anyhow. You know, air it up.
John would like to speak to this issue.
Sorry, I wasn't really here for this, but I drew a plan. Uh, the only, the only thing I have to say about moving it back is it looks to me like you're gonna go, you're gonna be like twelve or fourteen feet in the ground there. Of course, you only got like an eight-foot foundation, so.
Well, we can have bigger foundations.
Okay, fine. But, uh, once you push that thing back, now you're gonna start talking about, you know, getting everything regraded back. There's no doubt that you're gonna talk about, you know, talk about way more excavation of the property by pushing it back.
The state looks at it and announces the time to do it. When this foundation goes in, it's here for a hundred, two hundred years. Now's the time to move it if it's available and do the regrading and fix it so it's permanently right. There's no other chance to do this again.
And it is basically just a knoll. And if it gets torn out of the way, then, you know, so we're, it's, we're done and hopeless. It's not something to keep erosion, so.
So you're really looking at having a really, completely regrading the site to try to fix a lot of erosion? Or are you just saying, and at the same time?
Well, if, moving the house back would cause a regrading of the site, yeah. So two birds with one stone.
That was my two cents.
That's the, that's the congruent. But so, moving the soil might be a good thing because it could be more useful in other places.
We've done several of these in the past. The reason the board didn't get involved is because the contractor wanted to move it back. The only reason the board's involved tonight is because the homeowners, I think.
Life, life quarters.
Exactly, so.
I get it.
I move that we leave it where it is with enhanced erosion control.
They're gonna have to bring in all sorts of soil and stuff anyway.
For the, for the dragons?
Get ready, something without, yeah.
Is there, is there a second on that motion?
We gotta get the motion clarified, I think. Are we talking about leaving it where it is and doing all their amendments to it? Are we talking about leaving where it is?
With or without the basement, you mean?
What, any addition and, and there's quite a few different threads going.
Is your motion to go with their plan as it is or?
Their, their plan as, as it's stated now is to elevate it, how many feet?
Uh, three feet above the grade.
Existing.
And it expanded to thirty percent. I mean, I don't know, expand to thirty percent and leave it where it is.
We can't tread on the thirty percent expansion. We have no authority to curtail that.
No, but we're, he's just looking for a clarification of what your motion is. Is your motion to go with their proposal?
Yeah.
It's a matter of time, okay, now, is there a second for that? Dies for lack of a second. Is there another proposal? Jessica, I think I have.
I could, I could try and make it in a walk from here, but we leave the house where it is, but they don't put a foundation and they don't put an addition on it. So we're not supposed to say anything but the addition, right?
You're saying.
I'm saying.
Don't let them do anything.
Well, no, it was redoing underneath, it was all new footings and everything, so it's stable. You know, and the, the thing's, you know, in good shape. But there wouldn't be an addition and there wouldn't be that huge excavating occurrence.
There's gonna be some excavating anyway, just to jack it up.
Yeah, but if they weren't, weren't digging a big foundation under it, it would be less.
They're cutting into the hill and.
Well, I mean, the hands whose equipment, again, there you get a small excavator. I mean, it's just an option, I mean, it's just.
Is there?
Well, I mean, I can tell they don't like that idea, but.
Do you, do you understand Gavin's motion? Is there a second for Gavin's motion?
A second. Uh, excuse me, I gotta, I gotta clarify something.
Yeah, we should.
We, we can't, we can't, uh, ask these people to omit the thirty percent expansion. That's not, not about.
I don't think you can require sonic tubes versus, um, foundation, foundation's foundation.
That's.
But if they agreed upon it, then we could say leave it where it is, correct? I don't, I don't, I mean, it's just.
I don't think we can, I don't know.
You can't really negotiate that.
I mean.
It's gonna be too.
What we do basically is, if we can move the house back, then we move the house back.
Oh, I know, yeah.
As far as, we'll cry, the only other things we've been able to require is that they deal with, refoliation or whatever the hell.
Vegetation.
Yeah, vegetation of the property. And maybe have AWA or, uh, your kind of sort of law to come in with the, helping with the, the stormwater mitigation. But, uh, but that's it. As far, and everything else they do that's legal, like thirty percent expansion and, you know, raise it up and have it up, you know, raise it up two, three feet above grade, that's all, you know, in the ordinance and that's all, uh, stuff that they can do and we can't say you can't do this. We can't make requirements on them like that. What we're looking at is, um, let them do what they want to do where it's at or moving the house back five feet, ten feet, fifteen feet, twenty feet, whatever. And if there's an issue with, once they start digging on the hill, if they hit a silver mine or if they hit a giant ledge bigger than this building.
You guys are.
Then maybe we'll look at it again. Oh yeah, if they strike oil.
Chip, can I just read a second of this, just to clarify?
Yeah, sure.
I'll rephrase my, my motion. On one page six, under one point four, point eleven, point four.
Relocation, yeah.
In determining whether the building location meets the setback to the greatest practical extent, the planning board shall consider the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property, which could include, this is an insertion by myself, uh, the driveway and on adjacent properties, the location of the septic system and other onsite soils suitable for septic systems and the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. I guess when I read that, those sentences or sentence, I, I would make a finding that the relocation, um, would cause excessive disruption on this site. I guess that, that would be my finding and that the applicant not being asked to relocate the building.
That's an option.
Yeah.
So Gavin's got a motion that was seconded and still out?
It must've just died. It's long seconded, so we gotta.
Yeah, yeah, but we're still trying to.
We should clarify what I was saying.
Yes, yes. So.
So.
Go ahead and clarify it.
My motion was that they, you know, fix up, fix up all new footings underneath it. I mean, I guess we can't really, but Ken said I couldn't, you know, we can't require sonic tubes over a foundation. That's just kind of their purview, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they agree voluntarily or something, that's up to you guys.
Okay, alright, so my motion was that they fix up the foundation on a sonic tube style foundation, kind of like it is now, but, you know, much better, sturdier one. And, you know, they can make the, do all the work they want as long as they don't increase the footprint of the place. They could take off part of it and add a little more as long as the impervious surface stays the same and they can stay where they are. That was, that was what I was driving at.
Alright, so no increase in the impervious surface. They can jack it up to three feet.
But what happens to the thirty percent expansion?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm, in my proposal, they don't expand it thirty percent and they can stay where they are. But I don't know, I can do that. But I mean, if they, they voluntarily agree with it, then perhaps we could do.
Alright.
That's my motion, that's my motion, throwing it up.
I hear you. Is there a second for that?
To him, it's seconded.
He had seconded before it got clarified.
Motion number two.
I withdraw my second.
Alright, so. So, uh, so now Tom, you wanted to start another one, which was.
My, my motion is that the applicant, my applicant, uh, yeah. My motion is that the applicant be allowed not to relocate the building and to build within, within the scope of allowable expansions and.
As per plan?
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second for that?
I'll, I'll second that, I mean, we can board on it anyway.
Well, we can, we can have further discussion too.
Yeah, you have a second and keep, keep it going.
So Tom's idea is to let them do what they've proposed, where they've proposed.
Approve the application.
Approve the application, yeah, yeah. Any further discussion from anybody?
I just.
Gavin, go ahead.
I'd, I'd like to, you know, to, in conjunction with that, I'd definitely like to see the driveway. Don't let, don't let, sell it and move, move away from Brook as much as possible. And shorten as much as possible.
No, we really have no say in the whole thing, sonic versus threshold.
I know, I know, you know. Yeah, that's fine.
Jessica?
Well, I was, I was, I was about to say something. My, my concern, I guess I keep getting back to, is that they're gonna disturb that hill anyway. Right, and there's a precedent that we move things back when we can.
Does you have a new second, so that would chance me to interfere on that?
The cotton fill from it can be used to correct some of the contours up, up the hill. So, I mean, it's like a win-win-win.
I don't know if that's necessarily how they do it, they probably just truck it out.
Why would they do that?
Cause they could get the more ideal material somewhere else.
Well, they still need to put sand underneath, I mean, you need a base.
I don't, I'm just not sure, I tell you, I know some of these sort of sites are close to the lake. We usually just have to truck it right out so it's not sitting around washing away. You know, it's easier for them to not have it there.
Right.
You know, but I, I think we, I don't know.
Anyone else with, uh, two cents?
I'd like to hear Bob's logic again.
I, I thought that everything that is said about the mitigation is great. You know, and this is coming from ASYCC. And, and what they thought that they could handle perhaps the water coming off the impervious surfaces and stuff like that. But my logic is you can handle that a whole lot better when you are more than twenty-one or twenty-four feet from the water. They may think they can handle it, I'm not sure it can be handled in that amount of time. I think if you push the house back, I think then you have twice as much area to try to withstand the water reaching the lake or the excess water reaching the lake. And to me, that's what's the most important thing. Anything else? Alright, now, Art, you haven't been to the site to see it. Uh, so you may not be comfortable voting. So it's one of you two jokers. So we will flip a coin. If somebody's got, I don't.
Nobody cares.
Let's go to the board.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
Just a continuation, um, so in my mind, it is probably better to deal with the water coming down farther away from the lake before it even reaches the house. And we would totally, if the house was left in the same position, behind the house, deal with that water so it never gets to the front area of the house to get into the lake. And that would be our intent, to do the behind. So that would be leaving the, the structure in place, application as it was, but we would certainly, even changing the driveway would be fine, I think that's actually a really good idea. And just to make it so you trap that water before it gets any closer, so.
Is that two heads? We'll let, we'll let Gavin call it.
Tails.
Heads. So Bob, you're voting. So any further comments, questions? We're voting on, uh, Tom's, uh, proposal, which is to go with, with their proposals, livestock and grow. is livestock and grow. And maybe we need to show our hands. All those in favor of Tom's motion, raise your right hand. One.
I'll raise my hand, but I'm not voting. Doesn't count. I can do that.
I see one vote, all those opposed. One, two, one way or the other, come on, Sonny. Pick a side.
I just wish I knew more about the pros and cons, you know, I just, I'm having a hard time understanding.
It could be a tie, so you're gonna have to pick yea or nay. You can't not vote.
Well, you're gonna vote, Joe.
Uh, only, only in the event of a tie.
Well, there's no other proposals, so we're.
Well, we're voting on, we're voting on Tom's.
We can still come up with another motion together.
Yeah, we can come up with motions all night, Joe, we get something decided. Well, we're gonna make it, we'll try to make a decision. So the, the motion is, we go with what the proposal is. Yea or nay?
Nay.
Alright, so that's, uh, three nays, one yea, so the motion does not pass. Is there another motion? Robert.
I move that we allow the, um, let me rephrase. I, I move that we move the house back the width of the house, the original width of the house, which I believe is somewhere in the range of twenty-five to thirty feet. I'm not exactly positive about the width.
So you're looking at the new front is the old back, correct?
Which is kind of how we imagine on the width of the place.
Twenty-two feet and a porch is like seven feet.
So we're talking, do you propose to move back twenty-two feet approximately?
It's, um, fair enough to the tree that has the cable in it, somewhere in that range. I don't know, we have to take pictures.
That's where the new back would be.
I've kept the house at twenty-eight, forty-seven, twenty-seven feet plus seventeen, forty-four feet, three inches roughly.
Forty-four, forty-four feet from the edge of the water, correct? The high water. That's where the new front of the house is. Deck, overhang, whatever, the closest part of the house will now be.
Forty-four.
Forty-four feet from the high water mark. Is that the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Does that move directly back, or is it move?
That would be the closest point.
That would be the closest point of the house, so they can adjust it, whatever works the best.
Right now, their seventeen point three is the closest point, so we're moving back at forty-two. So it's twenty-five feet.
What did we say, forty-two, forty-four? Forty-four, that was it. Forty-four, so. We just fixed seventy-two.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Is that rough, Joanna, is that roughly the front moving to where the back was? If we're using forty-four feet from the water now?
If you include the deck.
Right.
Including the deck and the porch.
Which where that says new deck is actually existing porch.
Existing.
Yes, the same foot, it's.
Existing.
So complex, a kind of practical and emotional response, and they're both different.
Alright, so we're looking at forty-four, the, the closest part of the house to the water, to the high water line would be forty-four feet, whether it's deck, overhang, gutter, whatever, alright? Any more discussion on this motion? Ken?
With the ability of them to come back, if there was an issue here on excavation?
Uh, it's a big issue, as far as striking oil or, well, it's so big, it would tear down the highway. Fine, sure. Is that okay if you, Bob, you'll hold it in there?
And the York County State Department, erosion stuff from there.
Right. Well, that we, yeah, we always saw afterwards. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hands. One, two, three. All those opposed? One. Alright then. That passes. So we're looking at moving the house back forty-four feet from the high water line. No portion of the house can be closer than forty-four feet from high water.
And the floor level. If you raise, I have a second.
When you go back, the, the, uh, grade's gonna go up.
Right.
So you've still got, you still can't go higher than three feet above grade, but you'll be, there'll be, there should be all kinds of rules. Alright?
Can we find that section?
Or just, or three.
Okay, we're all set? Alright, with the caveat that, you know.
Something five.
If there's an Indian man back behind there, and skeletons, come and talk to us. Yes, sir.
Can I collect my two?
Yes, yes. We appreciate the time and effort you people put into this, and we understand that these things get emotional and, I don't know, but, we try and act in the best interest of first the town, and then other factors, so I hope it works out for you.
Thank you.
And now, if you decide not to do anything, then, you know, you're free to not do anything. But if you do want to go with your plan, then we would like to see the place moved back. Alright? Thanks very much, and good luck. And thank you, everybody. I know we, I understand. Well, that's why, that's why the chairman doesn't vote.
Well, I'm a veteran.
I thought I had a chair to vote for.
Life projects, I do rate. I did it too.
I know.
And money too, and that's.
Yeah, I know, but those are the things that we.
That was one of the criteria. The cost of it, that was one of the things I asked the DEP, is that a factor of, um, where they did it right in place was gonna save them a tremendous amount of money, and now it wasn't.
No, it's, it's, no, it's not something we can look at, unfortunately. Okay, what's up there, buttercup? Always, yeah, we'll go ahead and see.
Paul did, thank you, thank you. We only just, we only got the topo done yesterday, so I just got.
Come on, how long is it gonna take? You go ch on a, on a computer?
Well, I, you gotta go through the topo.
Really? It's gonna be.
Only did the topo.
Yeah, but it's not so horrible.
You have to allow the manager.
Oh, jeez, I would have thought this was bouncing.
It's not gonna be measured eventually, so.
This is a, uh.
You gotta go up the field too, we did two foot hundred, you guys five, we did two, because we really needed that, we really need that.
Well, it, it does.
I also, yeah, I only got a few big ones, this is mostly my. Also, I don't know who needs these, this is, uh, this is the one that's from.
Hey, is it ranked for you?
Oh, oh.
We're supposed to do that.
Yeah, oh, no.
So, um, I actually made a plan that simplified, I want to talk about the, the dredge, I think that was one of the big things that we were talking about last time we did the topo and everything, and I made a more simplified version, yeah, hopefully, so you can understand what we're proposing to do. As you can see, this, you know, this quite big, this quite, this is quite a ridge here, all this goes up, you're down here, you're at four ninety, by the time you get up here on top, you're at, uh, five twenty-four, so you've got thirty-four feet of elevation change from the bottom here to the highest point on this thing. So, um, and it's quite a ridge here, obviously, to get up to get to these houses, and obviously, one of the big concerns was about watering onto this road. With the topo and everything, it was pretty obvious that it's, it's gonna be impossible to keep the, the lot, some of the water coming down this, these driveways from, we can keep it out of the road, but it's gonna be impossible to keep it from not going down through here. And so, what we opted to do was, inevitably, there's gonna be some of this coming down both of these driveways, if you look at the spot grades and stuff, you can see that what we've done is we've actually raised, so it doesn't go in the road, it actually, the driveways actually come down slightly away from the road and back up at the, up the hill. Uh, this one, we've actually, we're actually talking, we're gonna put a small detention area right in here, we actually have room for a small detention area right here, so it's gonna, it's gonna drop down, uh, it's a foot and a half, drops down into here, uh, we're gonna cover it, there's actually a natural, there's actually a natural, uh, uh, drainage area that's right through here, so we're gonna have a culvert in here and so forth. So again, so the lot will not be running to the road, but it will eventually come down this way, what a little bit comes down these other driveways. So what we opted to do was to sort of mitigate that by cutting down in here, so this, this line right here, and it's probably hard to see it almost, but basically, what we're gonna do is go, this line right here is gonna be at five twenty-two. Right now, this is five twenty-four, and the dividing line, the dividing line of this whole thing is right, is this line right here, is this one here, so everything on this side's going this way, everything on this side's going this way. So what we're proposing to do is to really sort of ditch this thing, dig this thing out in, in these areas here where the houses will be going, something like this. So this thing could be all internally drained, it's actually, there's actually already two holes right in here, anywhere, these two, and on this one here, we're gonna dig this down, down to, this is gonna be, uh, five twenty-two, and we're gonna go all the way down to five twenty, there'll be an area in here, five, around five twenty in there. So now, everything, all of these areas now will stay in here, they won't be going this way, all of that area now will not be going out through the road like this now, we're gonna keep it internally drained, since it's all gravel, it's thirty feet of it, and it's not going anywhere, it's just gonna go. There'll have to be more work done on the front one, we're not gonna try, we're not gonna deal with that right now, because we're planning on coming back with a commercial, and, and of course, once we get to twenty thousand square feet, we're gonna have to do, the phosphorus, we'll do the whole, we'll have to do all stormwatering for this, most of the at-risk watershed. This won't, this will gonna be houses, driveways, everything is gonna be probably nine to ten thousand square feet of impervious, so we're not gonna make it that far to that. We'll deal with that when we go here, this is gonna, probably parking, and there's gonna be some buildings and stuff, and we'll go over the twenty thousand at that point, and we're gonna probably have to do, and that's gonna have to be fully engineered, and we'll deal with phosphorus mitigation, define phosphor buffers and all that sort of thing at that point, um, but as we talked about before, we'll have to come back and settle for that. What we're proposing, this driveway will do this, for this house, we're gonna do just one driveway, which we can do both of these, and from my understanding of the ordinance, that's fine, you could put two houses on the driveway, they all have frontage, of course, we're only just using the driveway for access for this other house. So I think that's one way, once you get up here on top, once we get up into this area, all, all the rest of this driveway is gonna be going into these places here, it's only gonna be, it's only gonna be, once you get below the twenty-two, the five twenty-two, the, the rest of this will be going this way. You're talking about various, so there's only gonna be a pretty small area that will be now running down into here, compared to, so maybe something on this side here, uh, compared to these large areas, which are now running down, so the idea being, with taking away about ten or fifteen times, probably never going twenty times as much water as what we're putting in, so.
So the, the two drives now, the water will, and then whenever it comes down, it'll go through that ditch.
Right, it'll go, it won't get to the road, it'll run, uh, it'll run down something, it'll run down something like this, and it'll end up eventually down the same way it is now, you know, basically. But, you're talking about much less water coming off the rest of this, you know, considerably less water coming from the rest of it, so we're, we're really looking at a significant reduction of total amount of water getting to the road here, getting, getting to this point, this is the point we're concerned about, we're talking about how that flows and everything, so that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to make it so that, you know, we get considerably less water coming into here.
It was further up, actually, in the big, wasn't it?
No, actually, that thing, remember they showed us that thing of the rocks, that thing with the rocks is right, right there, that's, that's right where it is.
The cover of the first driveway.
Yeah.
That is gonna drain, what should we, will that trace?
That's the only, this is only going this way. This is all going this way.
Okay, so, so the big, the front property.
Right now, yeah.
Right now, it'll, it'll run through the cover.
Right.
Through the second property, and then eventually down towards.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'll fit that cover, it's probably gonna have to be an eighteen at least, um, but, uh, we'll slide that, we'll slide that one.
And that'll be sized now for what you may need in the future.
This actually doesn't go that way.
This won't be here.
This, this actually doesn't go like that. Yeah, well, what would probably, we've already kind of looked at this a little bit, what probably is gonna happen with this is, right now, like I said, this is the divides of all of this area right here is all going this way.
Right.
And all of this stuff over here is going that direction. What we're probably gonna end up doing, when you do this, uh, with the commercial lot, is this, we'll probably build a berm in here, this'll end up being kind of a forbey, and then we'll excavate this out over here for the, uh, for the detention, so this'll be like a forbey, this'll get, this whole mound will get cut, this mound in here will get cut down, so that this water will go out that way, rather than going this way now, all this water from here. That whole front's gonna end up, have to be considerably degraded, probably.
Yep.
But for now, this is what we, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna let this run through for, for now, and, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be increasing, like I say, the amount of water, it's gonna be considerably less once we get doing this.
Nice.
What do you do with the terminus on that northwest corner of lot?
And here? Um, like I said, we weren't planning on doing anything pertaining, but one thing, we don't own this property here, so there's really nothing we can do. What we're doing is, we're decreasing the amount of water in this area in the first place, that's what we're planning to do by doing this. We're considering that's the water going in there by doing this.
Over existing conditions, but, you know, once, well, you're not gonna change the grade, yeah, if you're doing this.
Yeah, see, everything, this, this, it's actually, uh, the, the, this proposed grading is making, gonna make it so that it's actually a hump that runs right along here, that the water can't get over, and then it's gonna go down again, and then this way, it's gonna go that way.
So playing to it, and leave the smokes vegetation to.
Oh yeah, yeah, it's a long, yeah, I actually, you should see the vegetation right there, dark green is the vegetation, so basically, everything on, everything on the other side of that, this is, these are the lines I'm talking about right here, basically, everything on the side of the road will kind of act as barrier, they'll be right on top of the road, they'll be right on top of the home, everything will stay vegetated just the way it is here, um, uh, this, this, this is the point here, because we wanna do a little bit of a detention area here, again, some of this. And, you know, we'll keep the vegetation here, we're trying to keep vegetation between So that's what we've come up with, to deal with the drainage of the, of the driveways, and then of course, houses will go, obviously, somewhere in those areas where it's down, so everything coming off the houses will stay in there, it won't go off. And then, like I said, the commercial lot, we'll deal with that, that's gonna, that's gonna be a DEP permit, there's no question about it, because we're gonna be around like twenty thousand square feet by that time, so. Any questions about that?
Have you figured out, just, do you have any kind of handle on how much less water you're gonna actually be putting into that sewer?
Well, you know, it's.
The same amount?
Oh no, it'll definitely be less, it'll definitely, considerably less, I mean, if you're just, if you're just thinking about it in terms of, just wait, the, the, I mean, the only thing, the only thing that's gonna increase it is this new bit of impervious that's, that's coming, you know, right here off of these driveways, what we're increasing it is all of this in here.
John, that dash line you have in that drainage plan, is that the existing watershed break?
Right.
Okay.
It's all going this way, and this way from now.
Gotcha, okay, I understand.
Yep, so, like I said, this is, you know, we're gonna take advantage of these natural holes, and sort of, yeah, too, using just sort of this natural detention, um, and, you know, we're gonna keep it vegetated as much as possible, you know, we're not, not gonna. This one, also this one here, we're gonna build a little, this one actually, it's, right now, this one runs out this way, we're actually gonna build a little berm here, so it doesn't, keeps it contained in here. And again, you know, because it's all clean soils, it's just, well, you know, it's gravel pit next door, you know, we're pretty sure that, you know, we're only talking, you know, this is, all of this isn't gonna be impervious, obviously, the only thing really impervious that's gonna be in here is a little bit of this road, and then the houses, whatever, the houses, so the amount of water that's coming out of those would easily be absorbed. So the amount of water that's coming off of those would easily be absorbed through it, thirty feet of gravel.
So you're not gonna increase the runoff going the other direction?
No, we'll be decreasing, this way?
Not everywhere?
This way? No, no, because again, this is all self-contained, it's all, it's just like, you know, when you do a gravel pit that's internally drained, that's exactly what we're doing, exactly like we do it to the gravel pit itself. It's all gonna stay on the property, with the exception of that little bit of these driveways here.
Does somebody in the house in your firm have an engineering add-on that does generate this kind of work?
No, I generated that kind of, we, I sat and talked with Steve Sturges of Pickham Greeters, he's in our office, and we sort of came up with this concept, you know, and that's, that's why all I've done is put, I mean, I'm not an engineer, we just talked about, this is what we do, we go ahead and make these areas, and we'd set a grading at that, at that height that we do exactly what we're talking about, doing the drainage management of these things. You know, because, you know, it's a fairly simple, it's a fairly simple to do, it doesn't get into too much, really. The head of engineering is gonna have it, and we'll invest, and Pickham Greeters will do that when we get to that point.
The only thing I, I would hope we could receive sometime in Pickham Greeters is some kind of verification from your man at Pickham Greeters that will verify for us that, yes indeed, the amount of water going into that swale after construction, after development of lots two dash two through two dash four will indeed be less than is existed now. Okay. Or equal to it?
Yeah, it, it only has to be, I mean, I think we can only require equal to it. What's, what's going on now from?
What's that?
Well, it's a, it's a nice touch. Yeah.
Well, you know, after the site walk, it was, you know, I related to Scott McCloud, that, you know, look, you can fight these people the rest of the time, even with this, or you can try to do something about it nicely, but let's try to fix, let's try to make the problem, let's try to make the problem better than even just making the same, you know? Because, you know, we've run into this a thousand times, no matter how much engineering work you do to try to make it so that there's no water going off the site kind of thing, then there's a big storm right after you get done with it, and everybody blames you for that. So, you know, I think the best thing to do here is, I think we can actually pretty easily make it better. I think this is gonna take, the worst thing that could happen is he ends up having to sell a bunch of gravel out of there. But I think we're gonna, we're gonna use it somewhere else, I'm sure.
Oh yeah. No, yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's, sorry, it's gonna enhance these three lots, I think, just, just this, you know, work. And make it easier to deal with.
I put on, yeah, I put spot grades going up the centers of those roads, just to give you an idea of what the, the elevations on those roads would be. And, yeah, and, you know, Scott liked the idea of having us, he liked having those houses up on top, you know? He thinks it'd be nicer to have them up on top of that. We first, he originally thought that we could maybe cut into the bank in there, and I was like, wow, one thing, you can't even make a setback, you gotta, you gotta get up on top of it, yeah.
Yeah, it just, it just slopes too fast right by the edge of the road.
And, you know, I think utilizing the single driveway for the two lots, obviously, helps a lot too, because you're using not much gravel.
Right, and it's only going uphill a little bit, and then it's gradually going on the side.
Yes, do you have any answers about the, like, the right-of-way issues with, with our non?
Yeah, which one, what are you talking about, the one that's at the lake?
Right-of-way on the lake.
Okay, here's my second thing, right-of-way on the lake action. The, it's my opinion, reading the ordinance, that when Neveson conveyed this property with deed, he conveyed it along with the rights of this, and he was a violation of the ordinance at that point. The ordinance very specifically says you can't do that, you can't, this, this thing does not have, it says you have to have those, you have to meet those standards in order to do that, which he couldn't meet, and this thing's always been picked up and meet the standard. I think it was a violation of that when he did it, when he conveyed this, he conveyed it, he's very specific, they conveyed it with the rights of recreation and stoppage, he was only conveying rights, he wasn't conveying the thing in fee, he was only conveying rights to it, right to use it. So, to me, that's a violation of the ordinance, and it really, in the case of this, it's, this is getting transferred, that's getting transferred in fee along with this. It's not being, the rights aren't being transferred, it's, it's getting, the ownership's getting transferred with this piece, the ownership did not get transferred with that piece, the rights got transferred with that piece, and that's a violation of the ordinance.
I'm confused.
Well, I'm gonna say, well, there's a difference, there's a difference between conveying rights and conveying ownership, okay? Conveying rights means, oh yeah, I'm giving you, I'm giving you specific rights, you can use this piece of land, I'm giving this person rights, it's my land, but you can use it to do these specific things. That's how, Neveson owns this, and Neveson owns actually this road, he owns this, and when he conveyed this piece, he conveyed then the rights, and that's what the ordinance specifically says you can't do, okay?
He conveyed the rights to which piece?
This, this is that right-of-way we're talking about.
The Panther land in the non-motor.
Just this piece, this, just the piece of land at the very end that's not part of this, is what you're talking about?
This piece, the one that everybody's fighting about.
Right, no, but I mean, who has the, who has the ownership of it?
The ownership of this goes with this piece.
So that, would that be divided therefore, wait?
Well, no, because then you'd be in violation again, you'd be doing the same, if you, if you were to convey each one of these lots, we'd be doing the same thing that Neveson did here, so, no, you couldn't. What I think could happen, you know, can you even weigh in on this? I think one of them could possibly, this doesn't own it, and not, when, when it's ownership, you're not conveying rights, it's ownership, you own, end of story.
Then we have to develop it to say it's the commercial lot, we wanna have the rights to, or?
Right, you have to say which one now owns that.
Exactly.
The rest wouldn't have rights.
And only one of them?
Right, yeah, because you'd be, otherwise you'd definitely be conveying rights.
Right, right. Does, does the deed include that person?
Right now, this is a purchase and sale for this, but yes, when the deed was got, it would actually be conveying all of what Neveson owns.
That piece of property plus the, plus the?
Right, it would, it would convey everything that the Nevesons now own, which, actually, they technically own the road as well. So it's that, the entire road and this piece.
Doesn't that also the Panther piece?
That's, huh?
This Panther land?
That's the one they convey, that's the one they convey, Panther land is the one they convey, this one here.
So that's one of the?
They convey the rights with, which I think that would be their violation. You know, the idea is like, say for instance, say for instance, what they convey is they put a duplex on this thing, and they convey this out, would they be a violation because they would be over the net destiny by doing that? This isn't big enough for a duplex, it wouldn't have been big enough beforehand, but it wouldn't be unless they convey it, so similar idea, they violate the ordinance when they convey it with the rights, because that's specifically what the ordinance said you can't do.
So, so this now, would this be your opinion that if Neveson, who has owned this road along with lots for X number of years and X number of things that happened on those roads, and everybody is doing whatever they're doing, now all of a sudden we have new owners to the road, could that possibly change for all the other homeowners that are in this area?
No, they have, they're gaining rights in it, they have their rights, their rights in it, wouldn't change at all. You know, sometimes, that's the thing about when you give, like, rights and right-of-ways or stuff like that, you know, when they're given, they're given to the exclusion of the owner's rights, or, or, I shouldn't say the exclusion of, they're given to the, they're given, I forgot my little word, they, they, they're given, they're, they have a higher degree than the, than the ownership rights. The owner can continue to use it, they can continue to do it, but he can't stop them from doing what those rights have been, the rights have been given, which they already have.
So then all Neveson is gonna own after this is the road?
Hasn't been owning anything.
No.
No, no, everything's getting conveyed, everything's, everything's, everything's gonna get conveyed. The road, the road is kind of a non-issue because, you know, everybody has rights in it, this, you know, the, the, no one's gonna be able to prevent the association stopping what they're doing now, they all, they already have those rights, they're gonna be able to continue to do, use it, can't put a fence across it.
There's only, of the four lots, only, of the four lots, only one of them
Will own it.
will own and can use the right-of-way, correct?
That's how I see it.
Well...
What do you think, do you think that's?
Yeah, because, yeah, because the device away, you need a hundred foot, you need twenty-five for a trade, blah, blah.
Not if it's not over right of way.
Than the others.
But it is.
But yes.
Well, doesn't look like it, this one, doesn't look like it.
It feels like...
Yeah, I know, the road actually is part of the, the, they're going to be paying for it.
I'm saying what Scott's, Scott buys everything, but the lots that he's selling are not...
No, no, they'll have, no, they won't, they'll only have rights to the road like everybody else.
Okay, so then they won't own?
No.
No, and they won't have rights?
Only one, that's what he's saying, only one of them will.
Well, they won't have rights to the right-of-way, they won't be able to use the lake on that right-of-way. Only one of these four lots can, and he'll have to decide which lot he wants to, will be able to do that.
Isn't that gonna depend on how the deed is described, how lots are described, whether it includes right-of-way or not?
Yep, he can pick whichever one he wants, I mean, it doesn't have to be the commercial lot, he can pick whichever one he wants, that lot will own everything.
But it's only gonna be one lot?
Will own the road.
But he's not selling, I mean, it looks to me from, from here, that a lot does not include the right-of-way.
No, the, I mean, as far as how it's described on that plan? No, it doesn't, but that doesn't include them from, from also selling the, the rights and the right-of-ways to the person with the lot.
Ideally, I mean, if I was the developer, I'd give that road to the road association, get it off of me, and the same with that right-of-way, it's all liability, it's all business, and keep the one right for whoever, and every year, every year, somebody else has it.
Yeah, I, you know, that's probably an excellent idea, that's probably a good idea, because I think that's kind of what we had in mind when we widened the right-of-way too, you know?
Give it to the road association, let them deal with the headaches.
And just, like you say, retain the ownership of that, right to the water, the water lots.
All right.
And now, pardon me?
This piece of property? Which one is?
And, I think somebody asked about road association, yes, the lots would have the, the three lots would be tied to the road association. The first lot, the commercial lot is actually gonna use it.
Right. They would be a part of the existing, so they don't have to have their own, uh, they're not gonna need a homeowners association.
No, do those, as a joint association.
They just, the existing one that belongs to everybody else. Yeah, there was a building footprint for this lot.
Yeah, well, I can put building footprints on it, you know, Scott just doesn't know, it's gonna, it won't even last for houses, they're gonna go somewhere in those areas though that are created.
Right, and it has nailed it down, so.
They'll be within, they'll be somewhere within that, that twenty-two, that 522 guard door.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha, absolutely.
So that they're in that hole, and it's not such a hole, we're only talking about two foot, actually, we're just gonna have firmly thing up, so it's quiet.
Can I get all this stuff then? Can we just, um, ask the individual buyers, I guess, who would be fronting on the road to, to take care of the, their frontage in that ditch that's alongside the road going in? So, so now, there's issues with that ditch that's on the, that you hit down the road toward the lake on that right side? There are issues, it's filling up, or this filled up. Is this the time to suggest that whoever buys these pieces of property, do we have any say as to requiring them to at least ditch out in front of their property? Or do we put that into this proposed approval, or looking for the approval of the entire ditching area on that road?
Actually, it's one of the reasons why we're widening the right-of-way. We're widening the right-of-way, that ditch is completely contained within the right-of-way now. That ditch you're talking about is not part of the lots, it's actually completely within the right-of-way now.
I think it's part of the road association.
Yeah, if we convey it to the road.
So essentially, what we're saying is we're taking that issue out of the hands of the people who will eventually buy this?
Yes, the only, their only thing would be the fact that they have to be belong to the road association, and the road association would make it in the road and ditch, because they moved out. So they wouldn't have any more, they wouldn't have any more, um...
I think it's something that...
Maintenance requires to it than anybody else on the road, it'd be, it'd be required.
I think if you live on a private, you gotta join it.
Yeah.
How can we require these guys to take part in, or carry their fish here in the road association?
Uh, we can put it in the sample deed, you know, and make that as part of sample deed that they, you know, deed that's...
I, I think that if you live on, on a private road, I think the way the ordinance or the state law or something is, is that you have, I know they can assess your fees, the road association, a legitimate road association can assess all the property's fees and pay for improvements on the road, and whether you join the association or not, maybe it doesn't make any difference, all they want really is money to deal with, and I know they can do that legally. So, I don't know the way to make the, I mean, I suppose you can put anything in the deed you want, you can make them join it, but they're gonna be assessed anyway, so, you know? And that's on their hands, that's...
That's got nothing to do with us.
Right, 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 that's just, actually, yeah, that's just the state law. All right, so we're getting close to, where would we be now?
Preliminary?
Yeah.
Get the least preliminary rules, like, stop, maybe?
So, what? Have we gotten everything that we need for the preliminary plan?
We got John here, I don't see...
I know, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so I was in Berwick, we got in Berwick, we sold some.
So we got the application forms, right? Location map, big map, little map, blah, 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 preliminary plan, proposed name, verification right of, well, now what?
Actually, this is...
Verification of right title, written in the property or by deed, wasn't there some kind of something, some? Did we see anything yet with the proposal that Ash Cove is gonna buy this?
This is a purchase and sale, we've been here, that's all.
Is that, all right, there's...
It actually, if you look at the, if you look at the pack...
Yeah, I thought we had something. We, we ended the first half, third of the way in, if that's what you're looking for, the purposes of? Yeah, just as long as it's in there, that's fine, and he does address on his preliminary plan application here, starting on page fourteen, what needs to be answered, I mean, I haven't read what they've, what they've done, if it isn't something that we already physically have.
I can just use that as sort of a chance.
We need to copy this dated July seven on the book.
This, I got July third, in the booklet?
Yeah.
July three?
Yeah, I got July third.
Your second one was?
On the very front, maybe like this, I got the seventh.
July seven.
Maybe I'll read through it a little bit. It says third.
What are you looking for? Um, the purchase sale agreement, yeah, we'll see.
What pages in that?
There's no page in our briefs. Just in the one section.
It's in its own section under purchase and sale.
Yeah.
It's kind of in the middle.
Yeah.
And it looks like it's been redacted.
Yeah. No money is exchanged against it.
Get the, get the page twenty and then you stick, there's a few sections. Um...
Actually, that, the deed for that, uh, piece is in there too, and obviously one deed is in there as well. It's right after the purchase.
Are there any current deed restrictions on this property, you know?
No, nothing on that at all.
Uh, ta-da.
We actually submitted, didn't actually submit a copy, I'm pretty sure we just submitted a copy of the pound survey too, which actually has all of it.
Um, is there gonna be a private well in separate, correct?
Right.
Is that written on here somewhere? What answer, yes. Um, indication of ours, five, six, seven, eight, wow.
I gave you all my copy though.
Yeah.
No wetland areas on this?
No.
Case of all rivers and streams, not on the bracket?
No.
Is there any districts, hopes of dilutive? Uh... Um, no public use lands, right, no, uh... Open space. Nothing, uh, no hundred year flood deal? No flood zones here?
No. There's no flood zone around the most likely, you know?
Really?
So the only ones that were raised? Unlike, kind of like Lebanon, where's the entire town is flooded.
It's just all the land.
Uh, nothing historic around the area?
Nothing, nothing.
No, uh, main historic preservation commission EPS?
There's no, there's no evidence.
And you, uh, you, you, we granted a couple of waivers that you asked for, I don't remember the... Gotcha, yeah, 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 the high intensity soil.
Yeah, we did sort of test that, see if you have the high intensity soil, so.
Uh, what did you say the, uh, traffic was gonna be? Did you address that?
Was there a statement on that?
Number four, is, location rivers and streams, I just said, yeah, sorry, yeah. Wait a second. Forty-three daily trips on a Saturday. Cool. Traffic impact analysis?
That, that traffic they will be adjusted when we do the commercial, but...
Okay. Well, they've, uh, they've addressed everything in the preliminary plan application. Does anyone have any issues with, uh, anything that they've, uh, brought to us so far? Then, final plan application. Blah, blah, freaking blah, now, does this one have the, uh, public hearing? So all we need is the, uh, is there anything else we're gonna want on the plan that we have, that has been addressed? Anything you can think of that we would need that, that comes back?
I think it's gotta be the, the final plan.
That's what I'm thinking.
I didn't put the final in this packet, which is the, but I believe I did the final plan as well.
There's no restreits, we've got none of that.
I think that we asked for, we asked for a high geologic, we asked for a high geologic rate, and that was the final, I think.
Well, yeah, but that was on the, yeah, but that's when the lawyers come up for the preliminary, we waived that and the high intensity, high density.
No, actually, I did a lot here with the, with the back.
Well, upon determination, the complete application has been submitted for review, the board should notify the applicant writing, the board shall determine whether to hold a public hearing on the final plan application. So, we get the final plan from you. Within thirty days of the receipt of the final plan, we determine whether it's complete, notify the applicant, and then we decide if we wanna have a public hearing.
I, I mean, we find the application complete for the preliminary plan, and we schedule a public hearing.
Uh, the, the public hearing, that's for the final plan. We've got everything for the, yeah, we've got everything for the preliminary. The final plan is where we, when we get everything we need for the final plan, which we just about have. Then, and we accept it, say, okay, this is the final plan, there's gonna be no changes, then we can schedule a public hearing. So, if we have everything that we're gonna need, now the final plan, top, top, top.
Page fifteen, page, I think, uh...
Which, uh, in this?
Yeah, the idea is that you want it in the, in public for the final.
Oh, okay.
G or J?
G?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Oh, yeah, 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 my mistake. Well, it says if on the, uh, the final two, so yeah, fine. We've got everything with the preliminary application, so go ahead, let's schedule a public hearing. We're gonna need at least a couple of weeks to notify our butters, get the, uh, paper.
Did you do it?
You out the door?
Hmm? No.
Oh. You're still packed up, right now. Um, today's, uh, what, eighteen?
Yes.
Uh, and it has to be in this, what, ten days ahead of time? Or fourteen?
Publish in almost the date, time, and place, in a newspaper, seven days prior to the hearing.
The day of the first publication would be at least seven days prior to the hearing.
At least ten days, yeah.
Well, all right, so would you have enough time if we shot for the first meeting in October, which would be October two? Cause today's the eighteenth, that would give you, always. Yeah, that's just two weeks from tonight. Can I push it, all right, let's go for the second one in October, which is the sixteenth. All right, much better. Sixteenth of October, how's that look for, uh, court of law?
Yep, good start. Yes, do you, would you do final at that meeting if nothing comes up? I mean, I can get you final, I can be, you know, if there's nothing that has to be changed.
Yeah, it'd be...
Bring it with you.
Well, yeah, you, you, it depends, because my guess is there's gonna be all kinds of discussion on the road and drainage.
Yep.
And, cause I know all those butters have been put, a fair amount of those will be here, so depending on how that's, how well that's addressed.
Sure.
And unless something extraordinary comes up, we may be able to move along, but we'll soon have it.
John, can I make a suggestion that the, uh, notion I had earlier of having some means of verification, something in the brief, regarding that blowage?
Yep, sure.
Two dash one.
Yep.
Any questions, I think?
Okay, all right.
I mean, if you've got an idea, stand one, I think, um, I don't think there's a question.
Yeah, I would echo that, though. Talking seven o'clock with Eric? Yeah, it'll be the first day of the agenda, it'll probably be the whole, it is. Yeah, and as a matter of fact, if you do have something definitive, it would go a long way to eliminating any issues with the, uh, the road piece.
Yeah, about the drainage.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get that, yeah, absolutely.
The other thing would just be if you could nail down that right of way thing with some clarity, so.
Yeah, in what way? I thought it was pretty clear.
No, if you can rehash that, so, so that it's as clear as it was, it was.
With the legal specings.
Well, all we have to get into...
Is that even within our purview, really, the right of way? We're not even looking at that, are we, really?
Well, no, no, the only thing we're looking at is only one of these four lots can have access to the water.
Is that in the...
Doesn't have to, doesn't have to.
Pardon me?
Doesn't have to, one of the four lots does not have to have access to the water.
No, only, only one, only one can.
Yeah, most, but they don't have to.
No.
So we don't really need to worry about that.
Yes, but the, the public is gonna wanna know, they're gonna figure that, you know, there's gonna be a hundred people in each home, and they're all gonna be at the water at one time, there'll be fifty people there, and we're gonna let them know that only one lot
Right.
can legally use that.
And maybe that one right's already given away. Seems like we tried to give it away to the Panther.
That's not, but that we can't deal with, but as far as this, which is all we're looking at, only one lot will be able to legally use the water.
But shouldn't, shouldn't there be some way to verify that that is indeed stated somewhere in the package?
It's not.
It's the law. I mean, you, yes, you could, we could put it in, well, I don't know, I suppose you could put it in the deed, you could either pick a lot, or you can...
Is it in this, is it in this deed, though?
Well, that's not a deed, that's for personal sale agreement, but I believe, and I think that's for the entire, everything he owns.
It's a deed.
Well, that could... She's looking at the warranty deed, I think.
Yeah.
Which deed, which, that's not, that's not the deed, that's the deed for, that's never some deed, that's not a personal sale agreement. But I think, that's what you put in, you know, that's what? What does it say at the top?
Make short form warranty deed.
She's, it's, it's in that section.
No, that's, that's, that's the, this lot, that's the deed to that lot. That's the one I said conveys, conveys, and I, I think conveys it illegally.
But in here.
That's the deed, I put that in there, cause that's the wholesale lot.
Got it, all right.
That deed.
For the...
We haven't ordered one yet.
Accepting.
Accept the plan, schedule a public hearing, that was the motion.
Still in discussion phase.
Yes, we're still in discussion. So, any further discussion on the motion, except the preliminary plan, and to set a, uh, a public hearing date? Hearing none, all is in favor, which is to set the plan and to set the date for October sixteenth, say aye. All is opposed, nay, that's done, thank you.
Well, don't we, wouldn't it be helpful to have some legal clarification? I mean, this is all our opinion, but, like, there's gonna be people here wanting some...
Well, code enforcer's right here, he deals with this every day, or should we get the cop code enforcer?
I think, uh, I think maybe he has given his right of way already, and me may not have a right to give anymore, he sold it to the neighbor till he gets it back.
To the anthill?
Cause there's only, the property only had, it was one piece of property, had one right of way, even if it owned it, and it had one right of way.
I don't think the neighbor needs it, cause he has plenty of water, and it would just be, he's using it to launch his boat or something like that, but it'll be something they can clarify as we move on.
I mean, I think the deed specifically says that it's conveying only a right, it doesn't say it's conveying a property, no. And there's no doubt that it conveys a right, but like I say, I think that was a violation. I think if, if, if he conveyed the actual piece itself, I would totally agree with you, I would absolutely, that deed would be gone, it would be, but that deed doesn't convey it, it only conveys right to it, which is by the ordinance, illegal.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the right of way still is part of this property, the physical.
Yeah.
And, well, if you can get some kind of a, if you guys can pay for some lawyer opinion, fine. On, on what the deal is with this right of way.
Yeah.
I just think the board has an obligation to kind of nail it down somewhere in language, in this, in the subdivision approval package. So that we've, we've done due diligence to not screw somebody over who's gonna be buying a lot and is expecting a right of way.
I'm having deja vu, did we do this in ball flick?
That was different, because some of the lots are already in.
What, what happens with the deed is, you know, they can only deed the right of way, it's gotta be in somebody's deed. And I don't think we can say which deed it's gonna be on.
No, no.
But that's the buyer's responsibility when they buy a lot, that's not, I don't think that...
Right, we're not looking out, we're not looking out for the buyer, and, and, you know, we're not looking out for the mistake you may have already made, that's, we're looking at the subdivision plan.
All you, all it would be is something simple, it, it, it would be a stipulation that the conveyance can only be made to one individual.
But it might have already been made, as Ken pointed out.
As long as, as long as we point out that there's five lots, commercial, the three, and the Panther, and it's one of those, then we're clear. It's one of those five, we don't know until they, which one it is.
Until they fight in court down the road, right now, there's only one property that can use the right of way. There's contention to that right of way, it's, it is, right now, without, without the, the else, it's already all contentious. Yeah, that's, that's...
Did, did we get preliminary approval?
Yeah, we did, we did, and we set the date, so here, go, thanks.
What are we gonna do, let's go on?
I say eight, six, you know, I think it's just getting more trouble than it's worth.
We have any ready for it?
Man, Joe, thanks.
And it's more convoluted than the last.
I think it's a little too late, we'll just come backward at the next meeting.
You have to, uh...
We gotta kick the key.
Obviously not gonna target.
So the other thing is possible. Give us some new terminology.
I can't myself out, but it's five after nine.
No, we're not gonna do it tonight, I'm just saying.
Oh, well, okay.
Can we have a plan to do this, either alternate, uh, ways or some damn thing? It's just gonna get kicked down the road more, and the more it gets kicked down the road, the more fuzzy we're gonna get on the, the most folks that have to do the, uh...
My point.
And, uh...
Well, this is all my script for, uh, for John here.
All right. This is what we did a few weeks ago, they neglected to factor in the overhangs on the rear side, so nothing's really changing, and a set of stairs they missed. Uh, they had moved it, so they had ten feet on the rear side.
Right.
Uh, on the back side.
Now it's just eight feet.
The building, and then they got a set of stairs, so really it's five feet on the back side. Nothing changes on the other side of the water, so it was just, they, they missed their set of stairs, really.
What was the whole purpose of this?
Best possible location was...
And they're just jacking the camp around to try and make it, it was gonna make it a little bit better.
Correct.
Except that it's a little bit closer in the back there now.
Correct, yeah, they, they missed a set of stairs there, they didn't have the...
All right, tear it down.
It's, the old camp's still there, they ripped the old camp down.
Well, I don't care. And your recommendation is?
Allow it.
Allow it?
It's not, it's not on the wire side. It's on the back side of it, yeah, uh, the existing camp is zero right now from the property line, they pulled it ten feet ahead, then they forgot about the stairs and deck coming in, so, uh, it would be five feet.
Yeah, five's better than zero.
Yeah. They forgot about the deck too, not just the stairs. It's, uh, landing at the top. Yeah, yeah. No, I like the stairs.
I hope we approve, Kent, right?
What about the litigant's pass?
Any, uh, further discussion? All is in favor of aye?
Aye.
All is opposed, nay? So done, do you?
Against it?
Another half a careful... Is that it?
No, I got one more. New business.
New business, number three.
Oh, wait a minute, is that my thing? It seems to be, it seems to be our bigger material, oh, this could get sticky.
It'd be quick and easy.
Oh, that's what they all say.
We're getting a lot of people that are having trouble with the resource protection, the new resource protection that's taken, uh, expanded throughout the property. I was wondering if the board wants to look at that, now it's prohibited to work in this resource protection area out of the shoreline zone. This is just a local, uh, regulation. The D E P doesn't take it until ten acres of non-forested wetlands. We started two acres of forested wetlands. Would the board consider looking at that as a conditional use versus strictly just outright prohibiting it?
Wait, what is it?
Can you give it, is this the Lenkovsky amendment?
Uh, Lenkovsky's amendment was to throw away what we have and go back to the state requirements. This is, I think, a halfway medium that would allow people to do something in the shoreline zone.
If we approve, maybe.
Similar to a best possible location.
Well, but this would require a, a town meeting vote, though.
This would be changing the ordinance, yeah, yeah, so, I mean, if you guys weren't in favor of all, it wouldn't be anything I'd follow. But remember the Saunders Lane subdivision up off of Fox's Ridge?
Wait a minute, wait.
Three, four lot subdivision.
Oh, they off the river?
Yeah, I remember that one.
No, that, that's a low one, similar situation.
No, it was the one where they wanted to put, there, they didn't have very much that was above the protection resource, and so they were losing a lot of land. And they couldn't put, they wanted so many houses.
The old resource protection was quite a ways away, the new so, resource protection goes across where all the houses are, and goes across the street in a lot of areas, so... Uh, one thing that just triggered this is somebody was trying to build a small little shed barn for their pigs, and their resource protection gave to anything. But we have several incidences with this resource protection, and it's a forested resource, too. It's not water, it's just poor soils. If it's something the planning board would consider looking at, we'd look at it on an, on an ordinance to allow it as a conditional use.
And, and what is it, what's the wording? To allow development in resource protection, within what kind of...
Out of the shoreline zone, so it would be just the local resource protection that we've added into the maps.
Like forested resource protection?
Yeah, so when you...
Any resource protected, any resource protection outside of...
Shore.
The shoreline, outside of the two fifty.
So, any poor soils that kicked it in, it's still off forest, it's just...
Or great slopes, you know?
Yeah, 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 there's only a few of those, the slope's probably much higher than the belt, though, because...
Oh, absolutely, but that's, that's also what we include in, in our P.
It would still include wetlands, uh, just, just because it's not in shoreline, it would still include wetlands.
Right, yeah, the area, it keeps coming up as the forested wetlands. There's no ducks swimming around, there's no water.
Yeah, there's, we're not looking at letting, letting them build a house on stilts in a pond or in a marsh. We're looking at basically poor soils. Could we be looking at it in case of a situation?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so right now, it's, it's prohibited to do any activity in that buffer zone. And, uh, we, we, I've got a ton of them that have come through, and people have bought these houses, and they don't know, and now they, you know...
We gotta read the ordinance first.
Well, they're gonna get, it's not...
They should.
Yes, but...
Well, someone should inform them, you know?
Well, that's the real stadium.
They can't come to us after the fact, you know?
So, I mean, if it was conditional use, you could have them do a wetlands delineation, come in with the mapping, showing it's whatever, or... And then you could have, um, criteria to mitigate stormwater management with the activity that they've proposed. Whether it's a house, a garage, a barn, or a pool.
Or a big side, did you say?
Big blind.
But you're just talking about the resource protection, but it is...
Figure it.
If it's resource... Everything is filled around it, then there's no problem, right?
Is this something that there's, that people on the board would not want to address at all, you wanna leave it the way it is?
We can look at it.
Alright, fine, so until, okay, hold on when you take a look at it.
Now, what do we gotta do about moving forward? Just 'cause you don't...
Want to scrub water?
Terminology doesn't mean scrub to you.
Oh, I understand that.
I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about tonight.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that. But can we formulate some kind of a plan to at least go through the document and, and get a vote on it before Christmas?
What do we have for, uh, what do we have for next meeting, anything yet?
Tell them, the column post is the one coming in now.
He's coming in the second, a month from now, alright, next meeting.
Can we devote, it's on the agenda right now?
You're gonna need it. We tried that for last time. Well, yeah, but there's...
Start with these people in the audience.
Step comes up.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, I guess, is can we, can we push people off for one meeting at least, so we can get them somewhere?
Well, we can until it's a friend of yours. So, we'll, we'll wait till it happens.
I just request if any best possible occasions come in, they're fairly quick and easy, this was an unusual one tonight. I didn't wanna relocate that, but if some simple stuff comes in, just because of this time of year, we were in May.
We, we, we've done two in the space of five minutes, so...
Yes.
Yeah, I got no problem with that. But next meeting?
Otherwise, we keep the...
Nothing else is, nothing else big is on the agenda, and, you know, no one's gonna walk in with something, you know? They do the way, that's all they wait till November. So, yeah, next meeting, this is it.
And we'll just pick up with the, I, I don't work...
Right off, which is quite a ways ago.
Yeah, with DJ, it's the highest...
Last week.
And I have the idea for it.
Good night, cable lad.